Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting in February. Appreciate, we have some folks here in the, in the audience here in council chambers and those of you who are watching this on our Electric City Television, we appreciate you doing that. Imocation, I will lead us in invocation tonight in our respects to the flags will be given by Councilman Don Chapman. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you as a policymaking board to come before our citizens to work through in our agenda. We ask that you be with us in, in, in these chambers and ask that you give us wisdom and direction that only you can. We also ask that during this time of pending inclement weather, you take care of the most vulnerable citizens who are out in the weather and make sure that they have shelter and food and also make sure that our most vulnerable citizens, our elderly are looked after and taken care of. And finally, we ask that you protect the members of our city team who will be out in weather, providing public safety as we try to get through the next few days. And we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get into the body of our meeting, we have a couple of special recognitions in regards to the fire department. I'm going to ask Chief Moore if he would come up and, and lead us in that. Chief?
Thank you Mayor, and members of council, and City Mayor, we appreciate your time tonight. We've got a couple of recollections first. Your time, I'm about to call up in here Ronnie Esquie, and I'd like to ask members here if they want to come up. Ronnie's going to Anderson Fire Department, made fit in 1987, came and worked on the B-7. Ronnie and I worked several years, probably ten or twelve. Had a lot of fun, had a lot of interest in fire. A promoting engineer, April 24th, 2000, now after 27 years, he's finally retired. So Ronnie, we appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
You've done a good job.
Thank you.
On behalf of the city, I'd like to present you with this plaque. Says presented to Ronald R. Esquie in appreciation for 27 years of loyal and dedicated service to the city of Anderson. And it's presented by the Anderson City Council, January 31st, 2014.
Thank you.
(applause). Thank you Ronnie for everything you've done.
Good, good luck to you.
Yes, sir.
Ronnie, did you want to recognize your family, anything?
Okay, this is my wife, Marilyn, my two little grand boys, my daughter Mandy and my son-in-law Dave. I got a son, but he must have been working today. He works for the railroad and I don't think he got home until.
Thank you Ronnie.
He's preparing for this weather.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay Nick, I'd like to call up Battalion Chief Brian Black. Brian Black has been awarded a life saving award. On October 30th, 2013, Fire Station Morrissey called to assist with a possible shooting at Arlington Avenue. Upon arrival, the firefighters were advised that the patient was having a seizure. Battalion Chief Black took it on his own to investigate a little bit further, found out it was not a seizure, that actually the patient had been shot by his actions of locating the bullet wound. The patient went into cardiac arrest, they wasn't able to revive him. So the patient did recover. I think he is paralyzed by Brian, but he did recover and this was one of the actions of Battalion Chief Brian Black. And we would like to congratulate you for receiving the life saving award. Brian, we have this plaque presented to you for the city and also the ribbon that'll be worn on your jacket from this day forward.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you so much.
Congratulations Ronnie.
Take care of all you do. Thank you for what you did.
Good job.
I did a good job.
The minutes of our January 27th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the minutes of January 27th passed unanimously. We have three items of old business and our first item is request consideration of an ordinance to rezone approximately 2.2 acres located at 304 and 308 Kingsley Road from R-15, single family residential to RM-18 multifamily residential. Mr. Moore?
Thank you Mr. Mayor and council. I'd like to recognize Dr. Evans Whitaker, President of Anderson University, is our guest tonight. Always a pleasure to have him in our chambers. This is an application by Anderson University to rezone this land to RM-18, that is multifamily residential and that's generally what the entire university campus is zoned. What this would do, there's an existing duplex on this property. It would bring in consistent zoning of the rest of the campus and let the university do its mission of, of what universities do. This one would include though, they have a program, the Crossroads Summer Camp Program, so this will be the home of that program. Again, the predominant zoning for the campuses, Kingsley, went to the Planning Commission, received their approval. The neighbors, I think, have been generally supportive and I know the university in particular, Dr. Whitaker's reached out to his neighbors to let them know what's going on. We appreciate that. So with that being said, we would recommend this to you on the first reading.
First by Mr. Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockers. Discussion?
I just wanted to comment, this is the areas in the district I serve and I did not receive one single phone call in opposition of it.
Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the first reading. Thank you. Move right to the second item on the agenda and that's request consideration of an ordinance to rezone 17 East Greenville Street from LO Limited Office to NC Neighborhood Commercial. Mr. Moore?
Again, Mr. Mayor, council, this, I should have mentioned the other rezonings in Councilman Chapman's district. This one is in Councilman Roberts and I'm sure he'll speak to that in just a minute. Is it a request to rezone this property to Neighborhood Commercial, which would allow it to be expanded? If you're familiar with that piece of property, there is a building on the back, used to be a tax office and I learned earlier it was an architect's. And the proposal is to build two other parcels on there. It will meet all the parking requirements. Initially, the Planning Commission denied this, but that was, the applicant had not gotten all their, enough of their drawings and they weren't comfortable. Since then, they brought those in and again, it does meet all the requirements, be an opportunity to put it to some revenues, get used to it. So the planning staff does recommend approval in light of the other. And Maurice is here, if you have any questions regarding the process.
Any comments? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, this is in my seat and there again, I haven't had anyone to oppose this. I think it'd be a good use to get that strip of land useful again, because the little building in the back there, existing mill, I understand the applicant's going to remodel that particular one and build two new buildings. So I, I would think, I recommend that we get it done.
First by Mr. Second by Mr. Chapman. Further discussion? And I might not, and I caught Mr. Galloway's hand on the, the first item. I tried to look and see if I saw any familiar faces or disfamiliar faces, I don't know if that's a word, but I didn't. Did you want to speak on the first item too?
No, just the.
Just this one?
You speak.
That was the highlight, that was okay. So I didn't mess up on that. But anyway, um.
First and second.
We have first and second, why don't you come up, Mr. Galloway, and just tell everybody who you are and where you live for us?
I thank you for allowing me to address this issue. I'm a resident 607 Boulevard, which is really a half block from this property. The adding two additional buildings in this area, I have concerns. I haven't seen the revisions and the neighbors I've spoken to today weren't even aware that the zoning was going on. I'd ask that you slow down a little bit, maybe some of the parking concerns, I could be made to feel better about that. But this is a high traffic area, it's very near a major intersection at Greenville Street and Boulevard. There is quite a bit of traffic back up there. The driveway for this property is very near that intersection and also there are several retail stores right across the street that are already appropriately zoned for their use. There is a major storm drain that goes down the length of this property. I'm doing just brief research, I understand that the impervious surface requirement for Neighborhood Commercial is 70%. I just don't see, knowing the shape of that lot, how you can get three buildings and the prerequisite parking for all those businesses on that space and also meet the setback requirements. Now, if I see the drawings, I may be convinced otherwise, but I would like you to keep those things in consideration and I think that covers my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, well noted. Mr. Roberts?
They do have enough parking according to our ordinance.
Right, but we'll be glad to, is, is, share those plans with Mr. Galloway.
We've got plans and tonight, I mean, this is just, we're not approving his building of the, I mean, well, how he's going to build, how he's going to conduct his water, but he has to have all of that before he can do it. He's got to come back before to get that done.
Okay, and I will just say in the larger sense, this residential neighborhood is in the area of Anmed, AU, and also commercial areas. We're feeling squeezed, a lot of us, so I just want to be very, very, very careful in looking at rezoning requests in that area.
If we'd had, if it had been, of course, it could have been on Boulevard, we couldn't do it anyway, but on Greenville Street, you've got everything up and down through there's all commercial.
Right, but this parcel is abuts, the backyards of four houses on Boulevard.
Right.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this?
Well, I got a question.
Anybody in the audience? Mr. Kirby?
Procedurally, you know, this went to the planning board and they said no, and you say they didn't have all that information. We not have something in the procedure that would say, okay, they go back to the planning board and give them the additional information to see how that would impact their view of it? I mean, it seems like to me, we're sort of.
Well, and I don't really.
Jumping over the planning board and not giving them an opportunity to really look at it fully.
And Maurice explained that, I mean, normally they would have it all, and for whatever reason, because the developer didn't have, they denied it. Now, they could have said, let's table it till we get that information, but I can't speak for the commission as to why they didn't table it.
But we don't really know, if they had had this information, what their recommendation would have been.
Right, exactly.
It could have been still a denial.
Yeah, it might have been.
But I don't know. I think we ought to.
We've talked about that, I mean, and that is something that for the most part, the staff and the chairman would talk about, they look and like that this is not fully available. The developer didn't come, nor were the plans available, so that was about all they had and been better to have tabled it, but I can't speak to why they may have disposed it.
We could, we could go back and table it till they look at it, if you want to do that, because we hadn't voted on it yet.
We're still in discussion?
We're still in discussion. If you, Maurice, if you want to explain it.
Frank, you may need to back him up.
This application came before the planning commission in January and they made applications, submitted their fee and gave us some general information. You're not required to submit plans or anything when you go for rezoning, but the planning commission at that meeting, this, having some uncertainties about it, this, they felt like that, you know, looking at the lot, that it was narrow, you had a Duke Power right of way on one side. Without having a specific plan, they did not feel comfortable in making a favorable recommendation. Instead of tabling it, they just decided to deny it. So whether it's an approval or denial, that is forwarded to the city council. Well, with that recommendation of denial, we spoke to the applicant and explained to him that we thought this would, you know, not pass city council at all without having more specific information. So he went back to the drawing board and developed a general site plan, again, this is a preliminary site plan, showing that what he wants to do will go on this particular piece of property. So that's how we got to this point.
Mr. Galloway, do you have a copy of this?
I'll be glad to show you.
Did the, did the planning commission, all the members see that? Or, or, or we, or, we don't know what there, like Mr. Councilman Kirby said, they still may have come back with a denial after looking at it, right?
That, that could be, that's correct, but they just felt like that there was not enough information available for them to make a decision. They felt like it was more of a speculative rezoning, which is typically something we don't do, so.
So right now, what we have before us is a denial from the planning commission.
That's correct, yeah.
But they didn't have the drawing.
They recommended denial. Again, as a staff, we went to the applicant, explained to them that this most likely would be denied unless you gave some more information to the city council, which that's what they came up with.
Well, you know, I'm familiar with this piece of property and I mean, I don't have a problem with the requests they're making, really. I think it would probably be a, a, a good thing for the, the, everybody really, it's going to develop, going to be utilized better. What's there now, it's, it's, really, it's almost a hazardous thing, because it's a building some way off in the back and I'm sure they've had vandalism and problems of that nature because of the way it's set up, but I'm just concerned that we're sort of not taking advantage of the planning board's insights into the requests that's being made. And I mean, maybe it doesn't matter, I don't know, but I'm just, that seems to me, we're kind of jumping over them, but I know they just recommend anyway, they don't have the final say, we do, so I'm prepared to go ahead if that's what everybody wants to do.
Well, and we did talk about that as a staff, to make sure that the commission, our preference as a staff is, and yours as a council should be, they do their duty and make some recommendation. And if they're uncomfortable, it'd be like you, if you didn't have all the information before you, then you should make a recommendation to table it, do you have it? So the staff will encourage them, if, assuming that was their, the reason for denying it, hey, look, table it and let's get the information.
I just don't want them to get the message from us that it doesn't matter what they do or what they say, because it does matter, it makes a big difference to me.
Big difference, we agree.
And I think it's an important step in the process.
We can, we can table it.
Well, and I would, and I would say this too, you know, a couple of things that have come up on this piece. The only reason it's before the council for rezoning is that the middle piece, I think that's right, or maybe the front piece, wants to be a restaurant and that's not allowed in LO. The owner of the property could build the three buildings, just like they're shown on that drawing, and not come for rezoning if there was no restaurant. So that's the reason it's here, number one, and again, Council Stuart makes a good point, I mean, we make sure that Mr. Galloway and anybody else in the, in the community knows. And then, Mr. Roberts was right, when you rezone it, there has to be a very specific plan. Couple of council members were in my office earlier talking about dumpsters and parking and storm drain and setbacks and one of the good things we saw out of this, if you go stand on North Street, those residents along there have no protection from that commercial. In this case, the property owner will be required to buffer it and with a nice green landscape buffer, so there are a lot of advantages to it. And again, you have two more weeks and we'll make sure that the folks in the neighborhood have what you have. So I would, I'd recommend you continue on with it and we'll just proceed with caution and again, there's another really important step, that before they can get a building permit, they have lots of issues to address.
Well, we, we could pass it on the first, can't we Johnny? And then, then give a time on the second and third to go back, let them look at this.
We don't, we don't even necessarily, I mean, if we can't get them together within the next two weeks, we can.
Well, we could.
Who's that?
For the second and third reading, the planning commission.
Well, we wouldn't have to do second and third next week.
Oh, no, I wouldn't do them, I just make sure the community knows the plans, since they weren't available.
We have put it off longer.
Well, and that's fine, we just need to make it available to people.
Agree.
I'm more concerned about going forward, that we don't do this on a regular basis. We understand.
I agree.
Yep, we've already had that discussion, but thank you.
So we have a first and second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passed unanimously on the first reading. Our last item is request consideration of a contract with Clemson University regarding public education and awareness for stormwater program. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, council, do have the stormwater staff here and they can answer some detailed questions, but let me try to give you an overview of this matter. First is that you have been in the stormwater business, believe it or not, now in the sixth year and every five years, your permit is renewed and things do change. And so one of the things that is now coming from DHEC and EPA through DHEC and the Clean Water Act is this new permit. And one of the things that's in the new permit are some changes in the education and outreach program. And that is one of the six measures that is required of what we are calling ourselves a SMS4 and that stands for a Regulated Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And that's what you are, just like a lot of other cities your size. And they do require for the public education and the public involvement. This matter came before you on October 28th, 2013, there were a number of questions regarding why use Clemson and the Carolina Clear Program versus doing it in-house. So it was withdrawn from the agenda and then went back for some preparation. And let me mention just a couple of things that took place during those, those months. It's always your staff's responsibility to assess any federal or state requirements or mandates and try to formulate a professional opinion to guide you in the best way to accomplish the mission that we believe is set forth in the Clean Water Act. So in this case, there is a specifics regarding education outreach program and the purpose of those are to gain the public support for creating a cleaner environment. You know, initially, in the first five years, they weren't as stringent, because there was a lot of other things like mapping and the projects which you have on the ground. The new, the new permit does require more and the city staff has reviewed best practices across the state. And it's the staff's opinion that the Carolina program, Carolina Clear Program through Clemson has a very proven track record in 36 other communities of meeting the mission of public education and outreach. We've also looked at, there are a ton of economies of scale to do things with others and it's our opinion that if we do it alone, it will run somewhere near 20,000, the contract with, per year for five years, contract with Carolina Clear Program Clemson University is 15. Couple of other things I would say, that this certainly promotes partnerships and economies of scale. We're very dependent on Anderson County and Belton in this county that are part of the program, also in this region, Pickens County, Pickens, Liberty and Easley are in similar contractual relationships with Carolina Clear. What does it do is from a regionalization standpoint, it lets the message be clear on regionalization of what we're trying to accomplish in, in, in meeting the Clean Water Act. Couple of other things, Carolina Clear has, has in their track record, they've already established relationships with other interested groups in the region. They have access to the school programs to continue that education. There are a couple of things going on in the city limits right now that they've done as part of the county's program that we don't even get credit for yet and that's, for example, the Cox Creek cleanup with Anderson University students was held last week. They have other programs where university students are used to develop mass media, videography, info commercials, et cetera. They use college students for, in their interim programs on flyers and other printed material and then also use the students and the community for outreach programs such as rain garden, rain barrels, pet waste, et cetera. So looking at all those things and again, the fact that the economies of scale, the regionalism, we believe that our program can meet the federal requirements better with a contract with Carolina Clear. And the, the other thing I would say is, can we do it in-house? Certainly we can. But my preference would be, as your city manager, that our staff does what you charged us with and that's work on and try to put every dime, other than this 15, into the projects, like the Lindley Park, like the Huntington Hills, like the Orr Street and like the Main Street. So with that said, we would recommend that we sign this contract for $15,000 with Carolina Clear and begin to move forward with them and Anderson County and Belton on a regional program.
Mr. Harvey?
Um, real quick, Mr. Moore, this was, you know, an EPA and a DHEC thing, how it came down and how we're going to have to expand on what we've done the last few years.
Is that.
New permit.
You know, I, I guess it never excites me that the, you know, federal government and state government tells you exactly, you know, what we're going to need to do and how we tabled it. You know, last time, I appreciate how the staff, you know, researched it and gave us the numbers on what this is going to cost us and what, you know, the other, if we do it in-house, an estimate to meet the minimum standard, so we won't, you know, jeopardize those permits. I mean, you know, $15,000 sounds like a lot of money, you know, to me, but in the big scale, if it's going to save us money. So I'll make a motion that we approve of this one first reading.
Second. First by Mr. Harvey. Second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? Mr. Kirby?
Well, I can tell from previous discussions and the tenor of the presentation that, you know, the, the train has left the station and there's, you know, a hell bent attitude that we're going to do this, which is fine. I think it's a mistake, at least at this point, and I'll tell you some of my reasoning why. First of all, what we're really talking about here is a mandate from the federal government that says, we want you to educate the public about that it's a bad idea to pour oil down the storm drain or, or your pet waste, put it down the storm drain, it's a bad idea. And, but it, I don't really tell you any, any things you have to do. It's sort of like, we want you to educate the public that these things are not good or similar things like that. They don't tell us how to do that. There is no minimum specification of what we have to do, Matt. You use that terminology and it's really not, it's very vague. You know, we talk about that, oh, this is going to cost us $15,000 versus if, we've estimated if we do it in-house, it's going to be $19,000. Well, I, I submit to you that maybe we ought to come up with a $5,000 in-house plan to start with and see if that works. You know, we have been doing this for six years already and as I understand it, the powers that be have come in and audited. powers that be have come in and audited what we've been doing, and they have said that we've done a bad job or we hadn't done enough. We don't know that. We hadn't even gotten the results from that audit. Yeah, I think that's coming in another few months. So I think it's a tendency to outsource our responsibilities, that we could do a better job in-house, maybe at least try it. You know, it's sort of like the master comes out, and the master would be the federal government, has brass cup, and he gives it to, gives one brass cup to two servants each, one each, and says, now, I want you to polish this brass cup up, and I'm gonna come back in a month, and I'm gonna see if you've done a good job. Well, you got one servant, he polishes that thing every day, and he uses all different things on it, and he just gets it so bright and shiny it blinds you. And you got the other servant, he polishes it okay, and he, you know, gets it nice and clean, and he puts some, you know, puts some work on it. And so then, to come back in a month's time, and he looks at the second guy, and he says, the one that just did okay, he says, that's fine, you meet the requirements. And then he looks at the other, and says, oh, man, that's great. You far exceeded the requirements. You're wonderful. Well, you know, in a lot of situations, I would say, yeah, it's nice to be the best, and it's nice to exceed the requirements, but when you have a mandate issued to you by the federal government, I think we ought to try to be as economical as we can be in meeting the things we have to do with no choice. And then, the reason for that is that every dollar we spend on this type educational effort, which is fine and good, is one less dollar that we're gonna have to fix those drainage problems Mr. Moore talked about. And that's the number one saving grace about this whole thing, is that we have the funds available now that we can use to fix real problems, and which we have done. And that's, to me, where our focus needs to be. This money that we're gonna spend is not gonna, they're not gonna do the first test of stormwater. They're not gonna fix any drainage problems with it. It's simply gonna be feel-good, you know, putting out some pamphlets and flyers and putting something on the television or YouTube or whatever they do, that makes everything sound real happy and nice, and, oh, we wanna all have clean water. Well, certainly we do. But I have concerns that the financial aspects, we're not really getting the complete picture here. And the reason I say that is that, you know, we had a meeting about this about a week ago, and I asked, I said, I'd like to see a financial report from Carolina Clear showing what they, what their revenues have been and what their expenditures have been over the past year or two, several years. And we were told at that meeting, oh, yes, that's no problem, we'll get that for you. Well, come Friday afternoon, I hadn't gotten anything, and so you have attached to your materials tonight, two pieces of paper, one of which purports to be a seven-year summary of what they have spent in doing this, which means nothing, because they have added people, they've added entities, they're doing different things, so that's very unhelpful. The second thing you have is what they call their projected expenditures. And not that they've actually spent it, or they will spend it, just what their projection is. So I asked Friday afternoon, I asked our staff, I said, now, go get an actual statement, a financial statement from Carolina Clear on an annual basis for the last two or three years, showing exactly what revenues they've received and exactly what, where the money's been spent. They won't give it to us. Well, why not? I don't know. What are they hiding? I don't know. I do know that I did a little investigation of my own, and I looked on the Carolina Clear website, and I got it somewhere, and they had a document on record, online, that is titled Clemson University Public Service Activities. And of course, Carolina Clear falls within that part of the Clemson University efforts. The vice president that is over this for Clemson is actually in charge of economic development. But they call this public service activities, and this is part of a report they make to the state of South Carolina. This was actually the one for 2012, 2013, and they call it an accountability report. And they go through some detail and talk about how they've had $62 million of money that they had funds to spend. And then, over in the bowels of this report, there's a couple of things that interested me. One says, "Financial performance is ensured by rigorous university and state accounting procedures." Another part says, "To the extent possible, the authenticated data source is used for all PSA information." For example, financial reports are pulled from audited financial data, not from self-reported information. In other words, they're making the point in this report that they have extensive accounting and extensive data that's available about all the things they do for public service. And yet, when we ask them for a simple financial statement for two years, they either can't give it to us or won't give it to us. And I can't help but think they're hiding something. Now, that's not a good way to go into a partnership with somebody, when you got one side that's not being forthcoming with you and giving you all the information. And so, at this point, I don't, I can't support it. And so, I'm gonna be voting against it. I know that most of you've already made your mind up that you're gonna go ahead, so that's fine, but I think it is a mistake.
Mr. Stuart?
Uh, Mr. Curvin alluded to that we haven't gotten any audits back. From what we've been doing, it's expected any time now. What is that timeframe, when we're gonna get that back?
It'll be in the near future, but those audits will be on the first permit, and the requirements in the first permit are different from the requirements in the second permit. And you know, again, as y'all had said, the permits are vague, there's a bigger picture of education and outreach, and there is a lot of interpretation left. I'm just telling you that your staff, with its training and contact with DHEC, the $19,000 some odd dollar budget is what we put together, and that's what, we would be comfortable to meet those requirements, and they're different from the first permit.
I know, when we spoke earlier today, I know there's other municipalities that are doing their own, like Mr. Curvin alluded to, and maybe we could do their own. What is their economies of scale? What is their budget? Is it a $5,000 budget? Or are there municipalities our size is doing its own, or does it have to be the $19,000 which Carolina Clear came back with? Is it something that we could do cheaper?
They would, there's, you know, again, about half the cities do their own. Some of the big ones, like Columbia, have dedicated staff, and then the other 36, I think it's 72, are a part of the Carolina Clear program. And again, we can do it. We're just telling you, we think the economies of scale to work with Carolina Clear and the other municipal agents outweighs us doing it financially and time.
Well, let me ask you this, which came first, the $15,000 price from Carolina Clear or the $19,000 internal estimate?
I mean, I...
I would submit to you that you got the $15,000 price from Carolina Clear first, and then, to make that look more attractive, let's come up with an in-house estimate, it's gonna cost more than that, so that way we can get this thing pushed through.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor of Council, we don't do business that way. We presented a fair budget to accomplish the requirements of the permit. I'll stand on that professionally, and so with our staff.
Well, and let me, the last part, the budget that we came up with, was it, like Mr. Curvin's analogy, was it the bright shiny cup, or was it the cup that still, where you could get by and do it, you know, that still met all the regulations?
I would say it's probably in the middle. It's to do the job, and that's to educate the public as required in the permit, and to reach out to those agencies and the people in the community that need to be reached out to. It's neither one. I mean, it's our best interpretation of what that permit says and that law says. Could we do it for half? Who knows? Might. Could we do it for more than 19? Probably could. I would say this is somewhere in the middle to accomplish the requirements of the permit. No more, no less.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Lockridge.
I'm sitting here, and I'm listening to this, and I hear what Mr. Curvin says, and I agree with him, that you have something called government creep. And I'm not calling the government a creep, but I'm just saying that something that happens over time, the more government involvement you get, the more federal government, state government involvement you get, the more regulations the bureaucrats in Columbia and Washington come down with, more and more regulations. I agree with that. But I also have a problem, and the problem is the fact of, we are proud of the things that we've had accomplished. We have the Lindley Park project, we have the Huntington Hills project, we've got the project up there behind Toys R Us, we've got a project over there in your area behind the church. We've got lots of projects we're gonna be, that we're very proud of, and those were done by the people that we've got on staff. And the people that we've got on staff are the ones that are recommending this. The people that we've got on staff are the ones that did these projects. And if I remember correctly, in the back of my mind, these projects, most of them came in under budget. And I just think it's one of those things that we would be making a huge mistake if we didn't go ahead and take the recommendation of the people that are doing these projects.
Any other comments? It's Castle.
I was just gonna say, and I hear what you're saying, Councilman Lockridge, and I appreciate the staff working hard to come under budget on those projects, and who knows, if we did it in-house, you might come under budget on that too, and it might be $10,000, and you save $5,000, you know?
Or we might be over budget. That's right. You never know.
Mr. Chapman, then Mr. Harbin.
I guess, the other thing we wanna realize is that it's a $15,000 annual contract, if I'm correct, that it's $15,000 for the next five years. So, and it seems like, once we produce it, if we produced it the first year, and I appreciate a lot of what Steve's saying, I mean, I believe that if we were to produce something, and we're gonna reproduce it the second year, the third year, the fourth year, and the fifth year, it seems like that economies of scale would start to come down, because you've learned from how you were gonna do it. Is there a drop dead deadline, as when we have to have, we have to make a decision and have this information to DHEC?
They've, I mean, they've held the contract since October, and I would not want, the county's already signed it in October. And if you're not comfortable with it, then we'll just do it in-house. I think you need to vote either yea or nay on this one.
Well, I think so. I mean...
We can't hold each other's...
And I just have one more comment. I guess, I think it was Ms., is it Gaglio?
Jacklin.
Okay. In the meeting, we had also talked about economies of scale, that right now, just a portion of the state is, uses this service. But yet, we kinda ask if it, you know, if, as time goes on and more of the state occurs or comes on board with you, it seems like the economy of scale, that the fee would go down, because you'd be doing it for the entire state. But I too kind of agreed that, I was there when Councilman Curvin asked for the financial statement, and maybe you can speak to that, that would maybe...
There, well, I mean, we asked, and Peggy's staff actually looked in the CAFER, they're part of the bigger public service administration's budget, or whatever that piece is called.
Ms. Harbin?
Um, thank you, Mr. Curvin, for your remarks. You may have lost me a little bit on the polishing of the brass. But, real quick, what happens...
Parable, it was a parable.
A parable.
But you're right, sometimes you don't understand it.
What happens if we don't do anything? And we don't do an educational program?
We'd money out.
What, we would not get a permit, right?
Well, there's...
We'd put the permit in jeopardy.
They would issue a consent order, and you'd be required to do, and then they'll be in to make sure you do it.
And how much have we spent, estimating, was it around $7,000 we spent in the last few years, or $5,000?
Seven or eight a year.
Seven or eight a year. And they're expanding it, so it's gonna cost us 15, another seven on a year to do that. And we feel like, with Carolina Clear's track record, that, you know, we're gonna be able to meet those minimum standards that they're gonna set with our new permit, and also exceed that. I mean, for, to me, for $7,000 for this permit to ensure that, I mean, I don't wanna take a chance that we don't meet it, what we need to do in-house. And so that's why I support it, and, you know, and Steve, I'm, or Mr. Curvin, excuse me, I'm always, you know, leery of who we get into agreements with, and, but, you know, I've only been on council four years, I have never heard that we ask for a financial statement from somebody we go into contract with. And I don't really, are we gonna do that from now on?
I think we...
I really, I'm not really asking you a direct question, I'm just saying, you know, is that gonna be how we're gonna do business?
Don't worry my answer, apparently.
Uh-uh. No, I'm, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Let's do this. You know, I think that the analogy that the ship had left the harbor, I think it's, you know, a little bit further inside the harbor than you thought.
Well, the train left the station.
So I think that a vote needs to be taken. We have a first and a second.
Do you wanna hear her speak?
No, ma'am. She, I mean, she was part of the presentation, I think.
Just one further comment, two things. Number one is, the fee we charge to people, they pay $4 a month for residential, it's gonna take over 300 households every year to pay that fee for 12 months to pay this. And, you know, that's just the way it works out. But I would just find, I say that this is the camel's nose under the tent, and you're talking about this, Matt's talking about it's going from $7,000 to $15,000 this time. Well, we'll come back in a few years, and it'll be going from 15 to 25 or 30, and on and on. And then, you're not gonna have, Mr. Lothringer, you're not gonna have the money to do these projects that we all think are wonderful. And that's my biggest concern.
And you know, Mr. Curvin, that may be a true statement, because the government does stick its nose in the tent all the time, and it may be the future, but hopefully, it won't be. And hopefully, we'll use the majority of our manpower to do the things we need to be doing, which is having them out there doing the work on-site versus in their office doing paperwork.
You may win the award for the most optimistic person in the camp.
First and a second.
I try to be as optimistic as I can, Mr. Curvin.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You asked for a vote, aren't you?
Yes.
Want us to raise our hands, maybe?
Let's do that.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Harbin, Mr. Lockridge, Dr. Thompson, myself, Mr. Roberts, Nace, Mr. Curvin, Mr. Chapman, Mr. Stuart. Pass this unanimously. Not unanimously.
Passes.
Uh, we're down to five, three.
Five, three.
Okay, great. New business. Request consideration, first item, request consideration of an ordinance amending Anderson City Code 18-10, four, as it relates to keeping the chickens inside the city. Relates to keeping the chickens inside the city. All right, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Again, you passed this in December of 2012, so one of the requirements that was highlighting the executive summary was that this subsection will terminate one year from the date of adoption, will be reconsidered by council at that time. So the years come and gone in that time, it automatically terminates unless you renew or take this piece out. What we're recommending in the end is you take this section out, and then it'll just stay on the books. You always have the opportunity, if something goes wrong, take it off down in the future, but instead of bringing it up. Right now, we had four applications, been no issues, no complaints by property owners that we know about, we've done the periodic inspection of those, and again, they've been, everything's been pretty quiet and pretty calm. So we'd recommend that you approve on the first reading to remove that Section H from the, this section will terminate one year, and it'll be part of the books until you take it off.
Make a motion that we pass it on first reading to remove that Section 8 out of the city code.
Second. First by Mr. Stuart, second by Mr. Chapman. Further discussion? Our discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the first reading. Our next item, new businesses, request consideration of construction contract for Stone Creek Drive stormwater improvement. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor of Council, again, we have our stormwater staff here. I know they've worked to... to rectify this problem. And just a little bit of explanation, leading into Huntington Hills, there are a couple of drainage pipes, one that runs down Stone Creek, and this one that's under consideration now, actually diagonally comes in from the Woodfield subdivision and runs through, unfortunately, property, private property, but that's the way things were done way back. So there's a 36-inch line, and that line is corrugated metal, as we know, those deteriorate over time, and it's caused sinkholes, and we've gone through and analyzed it with our cameras and all, there are other problems. So what we've done is, we've designed a system that basically would slip-line it, again, if you have any questions about that technology, I'll let our staff do it. We developed a set of specifications, along with the assistance of Design South professionals. Those went out for bid after we pre-qualified bidders that could do this type work. So, this is not like a lot of drainage where we go in, dig up an old pipe like we did in Lindley and put new stuff in, because this is in people's rear yards. And we caused a lot of damage. So, we had four qualified bidders, Chandler Construction Services, who's done a lot of work with the city on downtown renovation of our streetscapes, they were the low bidder at 151,080. Our staff, along with Design South, reviewed their submittal and find it to be satisfactory. So the project will be 400 linear feet of stormwater pipe by sliplining with HDPE pipe and one catch basin. And this will be a long-term solution to this problem. So we recommend you award the low bid, it will come out of your stormwater fund, you have funds set aside for these smaller projects that come up during the course of the year.
Any questions to...
I just have a question about...
Team?
The sliplining approach versus, the other approach would be to take it all out and put in completely new pipe, is that right? And I mean, what about the relative permanence or life expectancy?
Come down and talk to us about that.
We'll get our...
Yes, sir.
This is Billy Bolger in our stormwater fund.
Yes, sir. The improvements of the proposed slipline will add approximately, but the condition of the pipe as it's currently in, being a good carrier pipe, it's in fairly good condition, the improvements to the system will add approximately 30 to 50 years of life onto the system. So we feel that that's a good extension of the current system as it is.
And, once that fails, then the next approach would be just redo it all, is that probably 50 years, hopefully 50 years?
Hopefully 50 years.
Thirty years at least.
Hopefully it lasts a good bit, as I said, the condition of the pipe, you know, it is a good carrier pipe, it's in good condition for the manufacturer. So with the conditions that it's being used in, you know, the 50-year life is a good possibility. So, if it ever came to a point where it failed more, there's a possibility, yes, that pipe may have to come out and then be reinstalled.
Well, I'm going to plan on checking back with you, 50 years.
50 years? Hopefully I'm retired.
Mr. Stewart?
Hopefully I'm alive. Mr. City Manager, just curious, you know, and I don't have a problem with this project, just, I guess from my educational standpoint, before we, when we first implemented the stormwater fee, there was a lot of projects on the board, and I know this runs through people's backyards, but one of the projects that I have asked about for a long time, ever since we started our very first project, is the storm draining project on White Street. And four residents on White Street, their yards are corroded out in the back, it's just washed down in the gully, so their yards are gone, half practically. What really set these yards of a higher precedent than the ones that we've talked about for seven or eight years for those residents over on White Street?
Well, the, Council, to us, a good question, and we mentioned this a couple meetings ago, that with the completion of the segment of Lindley Park that you've just completed, there are no major projects, and White Street is a major project. It's not $150,000 project, it's a lot bigger, it's like Huntington Hills, or Lindley Park, or Orr Street, it's one of those that'd be several hundred thousand dollars. So, we have developed that list, and we also have developed a list of projects that are like this. And I think some of the council members who came by to look at the stormwater project saw these. What we'd like to do now is sit down, we've got some estimated budgets on those, sit down with the council and the finance staff, look at our financing, and let y'all help us prioritize what the next project would be. The White Street, along with Goodrum Lane, another extension of Lindley, those are the major, probably half million, multi-million dollar projects that we would like to prioritize the next segment of. You're always going to have these that are failing, I mean, this, the, I know the backyards are gone, I mean, this is to the point of undermining some people's structures, so...
Well, John, that, you mentioned that list, and I don't know if Mr. Stewart was able to be at that meeting or not, but that was very helpful. List of had all the projects and several on one page, and in good information, maybe that would be helpful to get that...
And White Street's actually on another list. The ones they saw were the ones that have come in, especially in the wet weather, if you notice, there was a date, some of them as recently as a week ago, some of them probably as old as a year. Then there's this other list, we have them both for you, we'll make sure you see them both, which was the one, kind of Councilman Stewart's talking about, is a major project list, and so...
Well, my only concern was, was those residents on White Street, half of their yards are already gone, and as it continues to erode, it keeps getting further and further back, and it's going to be a structural issue before long.
Okay.
And so that's...
And we're ready for, we're ready for the committee to sit down and look at those and with the staff, and get some cost estimates to you.
But again, I don't have a problem with it, I just...
Mr. Lockridge?
I have a question, maybe to you. The difference in the top bid and the lowest bid was over $175,000. That seems like a lot of difference in the bids. Is it the same compatible kind of stuff that we're dealing with it?
Yes, sir. I mean, during the evaluation of the bid process and the prices that we received, we did notice some differences in the cost per linear foot for the contractors, and we reviewed those prices with the civil consultant ourselves and inspected the pipe system, and to make sure that the system, we felt that this was the way to go. And kind of sat down and reviewed the methodology and the potential equipment that were going to be used, and those could be some reasons why there was such a discrepancy in the pricing per foot by the contractors, leading to such a varied cost between the bids.
But he can do it for this amount of money.
Yes, sir. We confirmed with the contractor that they're comfortable with the pipe and the procedure to fix the problem.
Mr. Harbin?
Have we done this type of repair before?
No, sir. This is a, it's a newer technology for the city. So we've, we try to educate ourselves on the process and the procedure, and as I said, we've worked with the civil consultant and the snap tight representative to ensure that this is the most economical way to fix the problem and give us a long-term solution.
Is something you think we're going to do?
Yes, sir.
Because there's a lot of that corrugated pipe. I mean, you know, y'all might not know this, but way before I got on council, I have a sinkhole in my yard, where the corrugated pipe went down, and it goes underneath a wall, and the city came out and, you know, and repaired it, that was probably 10 years ago, and I haven't had any other problem, but, you know, I know where that corrugated pipe goes.
There's 5 million linear feet of corrugated, I don't know.
5 million linear feet?
It's a lot of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chapman?
I just had one real quick question. You said that it, 50 years for the, for what we're going to do for this pipe, what is it when we put in a new system from scratch? How long, what's the longevity of it?
Installing a new reinforced concrete pipe, you know, that system could have less, on par with it if it's installed correctly, 30 to 50 years, as long as it's installed correctly, properly bedded, reinforced, things of that nature, so that there's no failing at the joints. It's like any engineering system, nothing's perfect, but if you install according to specification, you can get the maximum life out of your, out of your systems, but...
Which is what?
Approximately 30 to 50 years.
So it's less than what we're doing?
It'd be the same, it'd be the same, as long as it's installed according to it.
Okay.
But I guess my, my question would be too, is that probably, technology could, could change everything, right?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yes, sir, as we said, you know, we've got a lot of constraints in that area, so it's the most economical...
Mr. Roberts has a technology something.
We did the fiberglass lining of sewer, which I guess I didn't know of anybody that had done that around here but us, but that worked out great.
I think this is going to be, these technologies are going to be what you're going to see. A lot of cities, we're no different, I mean, back in the days, they weren't right-ofways for drainage, or a lot of other stuff, and hopefully, we won't find it running under people's houses or driveways, but there going to be some of that, and these are the solutions to it. And, you know, that's a good point, corrugated metal had a life of about 20 years, as we're learning, now that previous councils put a lot in. But we've also learned over in Rick's area, on Hunter Drive, where concrete was put in, but not properly installed, and it failed in short order. So, a lot of it is, more the installation is than material.
And we have corrugated under some houses, over in better forest areas, so...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the low bid for Chandler Construction.
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Last item, a new business is, request consideration of a change order for Highway 28 bypass water pressure improvements project. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff Caldwell, our utilities director, is here, if you have any detailed questions. But since this was a contractual agreement, we did talk about this in the executive session some, and so tonight, we make it public. If you recall, that they are two to three major projects on water and sewer each year. One of the, the two that are going on in this budget year are the Hunter Henry area, which we are putting new lines in, tying lines in for better quality water pressures, et cetera. The other one is for some of our outside city water customers along Highway 28, Sullivan Hills subdivision, Dixon Road, et cetera. It was determined there are a lot of low pressures out in that area, so it was a priority, it was a number two priority. You awarded the contract back on October 13th, 2013, to Garcon Incorporated, which was the low bid, 910,000, $190. Part of what we do is, we really never encountered a situation where people didn't want a new water line. But there are some property owners along Dixon Road that were not cooperative in giving right-ofway. So what we are doing is recommending a change order with Garcon, the contractor, because they're getting, you know, again, they make their bid according to the economies of scale and the pipe they buy, and that kind of thing. And so what we'd like to do is go to the next project on your list, and that project is over in the Green Acres area, inside the city, encompasses Green Acres, Barwood, Haley Road, Lydell Avenue, and Springdale. Again, part of your master plan, next project, they have a lot of dead-end lines over there that we can tie these in. I'm sure y'all get calls about cloudy water. We're going to get exactly, I'll say exactly, generally speaking, the same number of linear feet of the ductile iron pipe, and the same man-hours of work and all installed and getting this in. And we're actually, this change order, and Jeff has the details, would be for $321,624.50. So we're taking that and moving it from Dixon Road to this site. So, again, same number of linear feet, how many linear feet is it?
It's around 5,000, almost 5,000 feet.
So we're going to take 5,000 linear feet, instead of putting it over there, we're going to put it over here. Garcon keeps right on going, and we'll have happy customers here.
Good. Any opposition to that, Gus?
Your motion?
So moved.
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You know, since we, I've only been on council four years, and one of the topics, I think, Mr. Mayor, I mean, City Manager spoke of is the water, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we've sort of, prior council has said that we're going to spend, you know, do a project inside and a project outside, and I just want to be clear that, you know, we were trying to do a project outside to improve the water system, water quality, and water pressure, you know, from the electricity utilities that do not live in the, excuse me, in the city, and, you know, they don't want that infrastructure improvement, so, you know, and I think the city went to great length to try to get it done, and, and I don't really understand why they don't want better service out there, but if they don't, we'll take it in the city.
Mr. Chapman?
I just want to mention, this is a, in a, these improvements, if we switch this, will be in the area I serve, and I certainly think that the residents in the district I serve will certainly appreciate. I know it'll be a little bit of an inconvenience as we're, you know, making this go forward, but I just, we appreciate, because I've gotten several calls on it, so...
Well noted. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Pass this unanimously. Administrator briefing?
Just two things. Number one is, our policy is for board appointments, any type of, or committee appointments, try to let the council know ahead of time, we're not asking for a decision tonight, in fact, it'll be on the agenda next time, unless we're instructed otherwise. But Innovate Anderson Board, you have seven seats based on your investment, it is time for your annual appointment of those members, currently serving from the council, our mayor Roberts, Dr. Thompson, Councilman Curvin, from the staff, myself, and Linda McCollum, then you've had two citizens, city residents, Doug McDougal and Charlie Thornton. So, they've all expressed a willingness to be reappointed, but I know there's, you know, again, you have time to consider that, if you, somebody else wanted to, if somebody wanted to get off, somebody wanted to get on. So, again, you think about that, if you have any questions, let us know. If there are none, then we'll add it to the agenda next time, under new business. As far as the calendar, this February for you, we are, the city of Anderson is the host for the Anderson County Municipal Association meeting, which will be this Thursday, 13th. It is at the Blackley Inn, I'm not sure we'll get it in with the weather, so we'll keep you posted. But if you haven't already signed up, let Brandy, Brandy in our office know. And also, next week, we have a downtown committee on Tuesday, and then our annual council retreat will be at the Madren Center from 9 to 2 on Friday, and the theme will continue along economic development. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all we have in a regular meeting, we have a short economic development, one topic, don't expect any action, it's just an update.
Okay.
Dr. Thompson?
We're going to take this session, I just have a comment and a request. We know now, discussion of distracted driving is a big problem everywhere. And around us, we have cities and towns who are addressing it. I think it's time for us here in Anderson to address the problem. So, I would ask, Mr. Mayor, that you would ask the staff to do some research, or you might want to have it work with one of the committees, maybe the safety committee or whatever, but to bring back to council, so we, for our discussion, what we need to do in the city of Anderson to address distracted driving.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. I'll pass that request on to Mr. Moore, to start us down that path of looking at, basically, texting and hands-free devices while driving. We hopefully will have a short executive session, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
First by Mr. Lockridge, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're staying in executive session.
So moved.
First by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? We're out of executive session. In executive session, we had an update on a ongoing economic development, which would be inside the city of Anderson. We don't have, like with most economic development issues, we don't have any type of vote or anything to report at this time. We've just asked John and his team to continue going down the path of... down the path of, of trying to locate this company and other companies within the city limits. Having said that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First by Mr. Roberts.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We stay in, adjourned.